Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Lisa Hicks-Layton.
Here.
Denise Melonowski-Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Next, we have the Agenda Approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that we approve the Agenda for the Special Meeting of September 17, 2018, as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Public Hearings and Comment on Agenda Items Only. Please limit it to two minutes. Anyone? At this point, there is no comment. Next, we go on to Reports from City Officials. We have Corporate Counsel Miaki, Warren Valley Golf Course Possible Liquor License Addendum.
Is he here?
He's right there.
Do we have support? Do we support?
Well, there's no addendum. I mean, what's an addendum?
Madam Chair, I was going to say, through the chair, can we have an explanation, please? An overview from the Counselor? Correct.
Okay. Basically, as I noted in the email that I sent to all of you, that was not attorney-client privilege at 5:02 PM yesterday, as well as the prior email that I sent, which had some attorney-client privilege. Essentially, this is something which has been required by the Liquor Control Commission in order for licenses to end up being approved. This document is. And then, the motion, which has ended up being included and spelled out, is to make sure that there will be no further hiccups if they can end up being avoided in dealing with the Liquor Control Commission.
Okay.
So, the motion just needs to be approved, and then just the mayor signs, or the mayor and clerk?
No, the mayor would be the only one who would need to sign this particular document. I have one. We can take care of it right after the meeting, I would assume.
So, do we want to read it?
If we have one, we'd be good to go.
Councilman Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
So, Gary, I just want to make sure of clarification for this. This whole thing is just because of consideration, possible consideration, that we are receiving or giving, I should say?
I believe the Liquor Control Commission has rules, this is what was explained to me, that requires that there be something stating the consideration that's being received. If nothing is stated, then they assume a certain consideration. But if there is no consideration, there has to be a statement of no consideration in the documents that they're given.
Okay, so just the fact that it was not in there would not be enough for them? They need something actual, word-for-word, saying that they're not getting any consideration?
There is no consideration. I mean, frankly, the assignment agreement said-
It seems petty, almost, honestly.
Well, it is. I mean, it is, I've explained also, the LCC 3, I think it was, the 301.
3 dot 1?
Which was basically a corporate report for shareholders and members and partners. I was told we didn't have to end up actually preparing one and filing one. I did not file one, and then I was told, "No, you have to file one." It was just like, "Okay, this is stupid." But whatever, you guys control the process, so whatever you want, we're going to give you. So, we did that, and, you know.
So, provided this is okayed and voted on and okayed by our counsel to approve this, what is the next potential holdup? Because I'm going to tell you honestly, I'm starting to get very, very concerned about this. This thing is just dragging and dragging and dragging and dragging. And I made some calls without, and I know sometimes you guys don't like to hear that, but without divulging the who, I was told that the delay is on the city's end. And I'm starting to have a little problem with that, because we say, "It's not our delay." We're ready to close. As soon as they're ready, they're putting all these different hiccups in front of us, but then-
Well, it depends on who you are hearing from. If you are hearing from the county-
I can tell you it's a reliable source.
The county was willing to close without anything being done with the liquor license, which would have been an absolute disaster for everyone, when they started ending up receiving certain pressure, namely, their lawyers were. So, I would think that certain elected officials end up contacting their corporation council's office, and they give them whatever answer they want to end up hearing. But then, what would end up happening is if we tried to close when that was taking place, the liquor license would be lost, and they would be in breach of their concession year agreement, which isn't my primary issue. My primary issue is, once you have, with a golf course, once you end up having a transfer of the property, the license terminates. So, this is why we had to do the conditional license, and we ended up having to do the permanent license in tandem. So, you know, I'm sure that they're pointing fingers wherever they might point fingers, but I'm sure you guys have been working on this very-
And I believe so, but I'm just telling you, this is, and you know me, I'd never just say if it wasn't factual.
Right.
This is two very reliable sources, two very, very reliable sources that said the delay is on our end. And I said, "Well, from what I understood from our counsel, one of the main reasons for delay is the liquor situation, you know, liquor control and getting our license transferred." And I even said, I suggested, I said, you know, obviously, I'm not an attorney, but I suggested that, you know, what if we were to close and just put some escrow, some sort of an escrow situation for the liquor license until we get it later, so that we could take over this thing? Because right now, we're in limbo. Because if I was going to start a league, I wouldn't start it there, honestly, because I'd be too, not sure when, if this is going to happen or not happen.
I would be curious to find out what they would have ended up saying, whoever these sources were, other than that, you know, the holdup is on the city's end, if they would have actually sat there and said, "Okay, let's just go ahead and close." Because you can't put it into escrow. Like I said, the license terminates.
Okay, but I was told by this person that you can.
Yeah.
And again, I'm not an attorney. I'm just relying on you guys.
That's nonsense. I mean, the statute specifically says that it's a non-transferable license. They treat it as a transferable license, Class C license, because they have no other way to end up characterizing it within their rules. So, what they do is they say, "If you apply for the permanent license at the same time that you apply for the conditional license, then we allow you to use the conditional license temporarily until such time as you end up having the permanent license." So, this has been confirmed, and, you know, the thing is, is I've been the one who's taken the lead with regard to getting this stuff done. The county just kind of sits there and-
Yeah, well, the county, yeah, I mean, they're not, I mean, I can't actually, at least the liquor control is not in the profit business, so if this thing took a month, two, three, or a year or two, they wouldn't care on their end.
And they're very picky about things that don't seem to make any sense. I mean, when I end up, you know, saying, "Okay, it doesn't sound like we need to have the form having to do with report of shareholders," they say, "Yeah, you're right, that's not applicable." Then I end up saying, "Okay, well, we have it listed here. Why is it included?" And she says, "Well, you know, really, you know, I thought about that same thing, but, you know, I think it would, it'd be good just to make sure that there's things in terms of authority, so we ought to have the resolutions basically confirming the authority." "No, you know, we're just going to have this done this way."
Okay.
Now, this form was something that the county's attorney basically ended up preparing with my two weeks, and he said that this is going to be sufficient. If there's a problem-
Which county attorney, specifically?
Harris Amad.
Sorry?
Harris Amad.
Okay. So, provided this passes the city council-
Right.
And provided we're 10 days, seven days later now, is there anything else that could hold up this thing from closing?
It depends on what the Liquor Control Commission is going to end up saying about what we submit. There shouldn't be, but basically, what we're going to do-
Beyond that, is nothing else?
The last two items are contained or addressed by virtue of this document. Then, they will consider everything to be complete. Then, they will actually review it at that point. I don't think there should be any problem, because we already have an existing license in place with the same concessionaire. So, I don't know how there could end up being any sort of a problem. But, you know, like I said, bureaucratically, we've ended up having some impediments that have made no sense.
And the easement situation, and the legal ease, and the transfer of those easements to the county, we're allowing them to use them, we're all good on it, it's all cleared up?
Yeah. And moreover, frankly, none of that would have ended up making a difference one way or the other. In other words-
We had no problem controlling it.
There are some issues, but we were still waiting for the liquor stuff to end up being cleared.
Okay.
And I mean, if anything, there was a time period where the underwriter in New Jersey, because we were using the same one that they previously used with the idea that that'd be faster, that's the, in my view, the most unexplained delay. The other delay was when the county, after we approved this in December, the assignment agreement, didn't end up approving it until months later, like in May. So, I mean, you know, I don't like to come up here and kind of rip on people, but at the same time, I don't like to end up potentially being blamed for something where, you know, I followed up on stuff, and then someone else hasn't, and then they want to say, "Oh, well, that other lawyer's fault."
Thank you.
Councilman Wenzel.
Can you explain what considerations we're talking about here? What, when you say-
Normally, if you end up having, as I say, you end up having the purchase of a business and purchase of real estate, there'll end up being various things that will end up being attributable to certain items in the transaction. I'm sure Councilman Abdullah has dealt with this, and probably Councilman Coniston has dealt with it. But basically, you have certain values that end up being associated with that particular transaction, and that are attributable to, say, the real property, the equipment and fixtures of the business, business goodwill, liquor license, and things along those lines. So, when they're saying there's no consideration, what we're saying is, we're not paying anything extra to end up getting the liquor license. As a matter of fact, in a certain sense, it doesn't make sense, because it's not a transferable license. It's not like any other license, it only exists-
It can't be sold, yeah.
It can't be sold. It, you know, if the property gets sold, the license is, has to be considered to be turned over immediately back over to the Liquor Control Commission. So, it's not like something, it's only something that we can get based on the fact that we're a municipality that owns a golf course.
Okay, that was my next question, if you could actually go through it to say, oh, and continue the old liquor license, why it's transferred, you can't do that.
Yeah. Once there's a change, the license is supposed to turn-
Councilman Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Wasn't there a lot that was, that was just passed in the last few years about liquor license being transferred in the state of Michigan, and you don't need to do that?
No, what you're referring to is a normal Class C license process. This is a Class C license, but it's an entirely different, there's an entirely different statute that actually deals with golf course liquor licenses for municipalities. So, like I said, this has been part of the problem, is that even the Liquor Control Commission, if you talk to different people, the big thing is to have to try to talk to them and actually raise all the different issues, so you try to get something that's definitive from them. But the three people that I've spoken to in terms of definitive stuff, there's always been little tweaks on stuff, and then like this last thing, it was like, you know, this doesn't even make any sense. And one of your other people told me it doesn't make any sense. I agree, it doesn't really make sense, but I'm on it because I want to make sure we don't have a problem. So, we don't have to do anything, because it's not part of one of the city's licenses, it doesn't go against the city quota. It has nothing to, so that's, I think that's what you're referring to.
That was the, that was the other question. If we control the license, why wouldn't we just issue one to ourselves at that point in time?
Yeah, that was one of the things that was, that I looked at at the beginning, but I was like, "Oh, their license is a golf course license, we'll be able to have a golf course license, we won't have to end up using anything in terms of, in terms of the quota. So, let's just continue to do that. It should be, you know, easier." And then, of course, it's ended up actually being more complicated because of difficulties with certain things that we don't really control.
I was under, and I thank Councilman Wenzel there, because I didn't understand what, there's no consideration being sought, I didn't understand that either, so thank you for that.
Yeah, and it's like the participation agreement sort of thing, all right? When I originally talked to a person who actually was supposed to be in a supervisory capacity above the analysts that I ended up speaking to, I was told that participation agreement was something that should end up being concluded, or included. Then, it was later, "No, you shouldn't end up having the participation agreement, because you're using a conditional license, and then you don't do that, and the other person's considered to be a co-licency." Namely, Oneida would be considered to be the co-licency, so you don't use a participation agreement in that situation. So, in May, it came back and said, "We don't have to have that if, if I deem it's not necessary, you gave me authority to do that." I told them, "Well, we already have this worked out," and they said, "Oh, that's not good enough, we need a statement from the county and from the city with regard to that." And, you know, and I said, "Does that have to be an addendum?" "Yes." Then, Mr. Amad ended up calling, and he said, "No, it doesn't have to end up being, being an addendum." And of course, the county wants to try to make this happen, we want to try to make this happen as soon as possible, but they really want to make it happen by the end of their fiscal year, which is September the 30th.
So, are we going to be able to close by September 30th, like you had said?
I just going to be determined, we're going to try to set a date.
Because I know, that's why you asked me to do this special meeting, so you could close by the end of the month.
Yeah, and that's the idea. But the thing is, is that it's going to end up being a matter of what the Liquor Control Commission ends up, ends up, how long they take. So, we will call over to them, say, "You've got everything," and follow up, "When are we going to end up having this?" And basically, we're told it should be 20 days after you submit, but again, you know, I can only control so much. I don't, I don't want to sit here and overpromise and say, "Oh, absolutely, we'll be done by the end of the month, no problem," when I don't end up controlling what the Liquor Control Commission does. I mean, I'll badger them, and I basically have cleared out everything in my schedule to basically be able to deal with this matter for the next two weeks.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat, and Councilman Bazey, sorry.
Thanks. I guess I need clarification, two items. One is on this letter here that was sent to us from Wayne County. There's two items, you mentioned Section 3.1, but what about the first, first item, about the liquor license?
Well, actually, both of the items are at the no consideration and the reference to the participation agreement, and both of them are addressed in the letter.
So, who's the liquor license being transferred from?
The liquor license is technically being transferred from Oneida Golf Services, Inc. and the county of Wayne to Oneida Golf Services and the city of Dearborn Heights.
Okay. The second item, I guess, I don't know about the council chair, but with the motion, I don't know if we're going to vote on this motion today, but I think it should be clarified, it should be written for better, better clarification. It's just, it's too vague. It's talking about lease agreement, it's talking about purchase agreement, it's talking about the sale agreement. It's all together. I think it should be more specific as the close on the purchase. It should state the fact that it's closed on the purchase. And also, it should be another item to sign, sign, we can approve the sign on the documents for, necessary for the liquor license. And for the item for the lease, that shouldn't be on here, we should have that, if it has something to do with leasing the golf course, that should be on another motion for the council to approve the lease agreement on the golf course.
The council has already approved the lease agreement on the golf course back in October of 2017. As a matter of fact, as I indicated before, most of the language in this motion was already ended up being approved back in October of last year. All I'm doing is adding in stuff having to do with the liquor license, so that if the Liquor Control Commission was to say, "Well, your motion having to do with the assignment agreement doesn't necessarily," it was done with the idea that the assignment agreement contained a participation agreement, so we want to make sure that you have, it changed in terms of your motion, this would cover it. So, we don't end up having another unnecessary holdup based on the idea of them feeling that there's insufficient authority. That is what, that is what part of the concern was with regard to the report of, of the stockholders, and that's why this motion is drafted the way it was. In terms of being able to close the transaction, in terms of the purchase, and in terms of the lease, the mayor and I are already authorized to do everything that's stated in this, in this situation, and that's pretty much standard with anything that we end up doing. In other words, you know, if you're going to end up having something, signing a closing statement, that's something that's authorized to end up being done. So, all of these things are, are already authorized with regard to the purchase agreement and with regard to the lease agreement.
So, why are we here today, though? I mean, if it's been authorized, why are we here to sign this motion?
Because you are approving this letter, this statement, and authorizing the mayor to sign it, and this motion is included, not just with the idea of doing that, but making sure that we don't have any other hiccups in dealing with the Liquor Control Commission. You know, I don't want to be, you know, I mean, part of the idea is, is we want to make sure that everything that we do is not going to end up being considered to be problematic in terms of authorization, and that is one of the things that the Liquor Control Commission had a concern with, with regard to that report of stockholders. So, that's what the idea is in this situation. Oh, we want another form signed? Here we go. Here's a form that can end up being signed by the mayor to finalize the completion of this. You need us to end up signing something that says that we've closed on the sale, and now we submit that? Because what's likely to happen is, the Liquor Control Commission will approve the conditional license provisionally with the idea that we will close the real estate transaction. Then, we are going to almost certainly have to file a form with the Liquor Control Commission saying, "We've closed." After we do that, they will issue the liquor license. If they want to make sure that something is included in this motion that says that the mayor can sign off on that document, then I want this motion to be able to end up covering that. I think it's already covered, I want to make sure we don't have a problem with it. Because I'm not expecting, I wasn't expecting certain hiccups that we've already ended up having. I don't think they've been reasonable. I would rather be in a position where we don't end up having a problem, and that's why this is drafted the way it is.
Again, I mean, I'm not comfortable in signing this motion today unless, I mean, we have to be specific, close on the purchase of the golf course and maybe approve the letter, but nothing on the lease. I mean, you mentioned October, but I'm not going to sign on something in October. What we're signing here is something today. So, for today, for me, if I sign this, it has to say, "Closing on the purchase of the golf course and maybe approval of the letter, period, not anything else on lease." If it was agreed on, then that's something that was done before, but for now, if we approve the motion, it has to take the rest of them out and just be specific, "I'm closing on the purchase, authorizing the mayor to sign on the purchase of the golf course and also of the letter," and that's it.
Well, it was done before, and the city is contractually bound to end up doing both.
Councilman Abdullah.
Just think out loud here, though, wouldn't this have to include the lease? Because if this, this thing that we're doing between us and the county is for the purchase of the golf course, and then the sub-lease part, the little part, I can't think of which hole it is.
It's like two holes.
One or two holes, what have you. To me, just from legalese, and I'm not an attorney, for full disclosure, but it would have to be included, because that liquor license, to be able to use and drink and do whatever you need to do with liquor, on that whole premises, not just on the purchase part. So, to me, just logically, it would have to be, the lease part would have to be included.
Well, the purchase, let me, let me address that a little obliquely. The purchase agreement says, "We are purchasing all this property for $1.8 million, but we are leasing certain things like the holes to the west and a few little areas that are just north and could go into the county's right-ofways."
Right.
Closer to like Ann Arbor Trail. We are leasing that space. It's something like, you put both things together, it's like 11.5 acres and one acre, so it's like 12.5 acres and includes the holes. I mean, you'll just lose your holes on the holes on the west side of the golf course if you don't do it. But it says that the lease will end up having a commencement date of the date of the closing on the purchase agreement, and we're going to sign off on it, and the consideration is $1 per term, and the terms go until 2028, and then 30 years and another 30 years. So, I mean, essentially, what you're talking about is, they're throwing in these other holes based on long-term leases, they just don't want to necessarily commit to it, you know, in perpetuity, because they may need the space by Knoller Bend and around there. So, and also, they can't end up selling to us stuff that goes into their right-ofway in case Heinz Drive and Ann Arbor Trail need to expand. So, we're leasing this stuff. And that's, I mean, that's basically what we're dealing with.
No, my point is, it would have to be included in order for liquor to be consumed, sold, et cetera, et cetera, on the total premises, including the lease part. Wouldn't it be have to, wouldn't it have to be included in the language?
I mean, that people are going, there's no bars on the leased part, that's part of the thing that-
There's no what?
There are no bars in the leased areas. It's, they're just basically-
They have beer carts.
Yeah, I'm not a golfer, but my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that sometimes they have people go around-
Don't they put the drinks on the carts?
If indeed, that's, if that's-
That's where I'm thinking. I don't golf either, but I'm just thinking out loud, if somebody had a beer-
Right.
The liquor license would have to include the sale part and the lease part, and therefore, the language would have to include the lease part, is what I'm thinking.
And I would say that you're correct about that.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, in regards to this, is this in essence saying that there's no limitations on what the mayor can sign on in regards to the golf course from this day forward if we approve this?
No, it's basically saying that the mayor will be able to sign all documents related to incidental to, necessary to finalizing the transfer of the liquor license-
Okay.
Pursuant to the assignment agreement, you know. So, it's not like the mayor could sit there and say, "Well, let's throw in another $10,000, because the assignment agreement doesn't provide for that."
No, I just wondered how many times you're going to have to keep coming back if something else?
The idea is, is that we should not need to end up coming back. The next time, we should be coming back to discuss this matter, we should say, "We closed, and now we are officially owning the golf course." And that's why the language is drafted the way it is, so that we don't have to potentially come back, have another special meeting, do something else.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
The consent letter that we received from-
Mr. Amad.
Mr. Amad.
Yeah.
That is all, that's what's stated in your motion here, correct?
That that would end up being-
That's the consent letter you're talking about.
That is correct.
Okay. That's the, I don't see it, dated September 17, 2018, from Harris Amad.
Clarification letter is the way I referred to it in the motion.
Yes, I have it here. Warren Valley Golf Course Clarification for LCC.
Right.
So, that is spelled out in your, that's, that's the letter that you're referring to.
Exactly. And if you see, the thing that links it back is in the subject line, the ray, it says, "Warren Valley Golf Course Clarification for LCC."
Correct.
So, I just wanted to cross-reference that, so everyone knows.
I just want to make sure this is the letter that we're talking about.
Councilman Coniston.
And, Mr. Miaki, so we're, if we pass this resolution, we're giving the mayor our okay to sign the letter, basically. We're not signing, we don't sign the resolution.
Yeah, you're giving the mayor the authority to sign off on this letter on behalf of the city.
Right, but we're not signing anything.
No.
Which letter are we talking about? We're talking, the Wayne County letter, or the letter that you sent?
The clarification letter, which is a letter dated September 17, 2018, addressed to Daniel S. Pletko in care of me, and with a ray that basically says, "Warren Valley Golf Course Clarification for LCC," and has Mr. Amad's little squiggle here in terms of his signature and a blank space for the mayor to end up signing. And it was attached to the email that I sent everyone yesterday at 5:02 PM. At least, that's how it registered in my-
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
You can read this for the record.
Okay.
Dated September 17, 2018, the mayor, Daniel S. Pletko, and Gary Miaki, Dearborn Heights Corporation Counsel, Warren Valley Golf Course Clarification for LCC. Dear Mayor Pletko, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission has requested a clarification statement for two items with respect to the Wayne County sale of the Warren Valley Golf Course to the city of Dearborn Heights, parentheses, WVGC sale. This letter will serve as a clarification statement. Wayne County has asserted, and the city of Dearborn Heights agrees, that no consideration is being sought for the liquor license associated with the Warren Valley Golf Course as part of the Warren Valley Golf Course sale. With respect to the reference of the participation agreement in Section 3.1 of the assignment agreement, Wayne County has asserted, and the city of Dearborn Heights agrees, that this reference is not applicable to the Wayne-Warn Valley Golf Course sale and will be disregarded because there will be no participation agreement for the Wayne, for the Warren Valley Golf Course sale. By signing below, the parties are affirming that the content of this letter and these clarification statements regard Harris Ahmad Esquire, Principal Attorney, Tax and Related Real Estate Division, Wayne County. So I think we have that on record as that's the letter, and--
Yeah.
Councilman Bazey?
Okay, why don't we just put an addendum number on here like we have been for, I mean, the last--
So this would be counted as 9A, right?
I mean, we should put an addendum number on it so--
Yeah, it's--
We can reference this, and if the city clerk--
Okay, well, then we'll, we'll call that 9A--
Okay.
--as read by Councilman Muscat.
Well, if we could just make sure that it's the same document, because there were a few things where Councilman Muscat, like spelled out the whole Warren Valley Golf Course.
Do you want a second person to read it?
He did it for, I think, so that people could understand, as opposed to--
Well--
WVGC sale, so--
Yeah, Warren, but that's what that--
Okay.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I was going to say, what I would recommend is, is you, like you said, Councilman Bazey, include this as 9A in its official record.
Yes.
Part of the city council agenda, and that suffice, I think you said it too.
Even refer to the email, I mean, it's not like the email is going--
Well, I'm not comfortable in the email--
No, the email's not 9A.
Because the email is, it's too vague. So I think we should just put this letter from Wayne County as an addendum.
9A, as read by Councilman Muscat, is what we will call it, the letter.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Constan?
Yeah, and then we can move, somebody can make the motion and, and read the, the motion, or most of it, and vote on the motion, and I think that's it.
No, we're not ready for a motion. We're here to sign as, per the city attorney, says we're here to approve this letter.
To move forward on the closing.
Approve the mayor to sign that letter.
This letter, exactly.
Right, so we're calling the letter as read by Councilman Muscat, 9A, and that's for the signature agreement for the city of Dearborn Heights by the mayor.
So the motion would be, if I get this correct, that, and this is not a motion, I'm just going to say it out loud, that I would move that the city council agree with Harris Ahmad, Principal Attorney, Tax and Real Estate Division of Wayne County, to authorize the city of Dearborn Heights, Mayor Daniel Pletko, to sign the clarification letter as outlined in 9A. Would that be--
Yes, correct.
You could say dated September 11, 17.
Approve the letter and authorize the signature.
Okay, yes.
Basically say--
So we can do that, and everything would be, I think everybody would be happy?
Yeah, because that's mainly what we need, is the signature on this piece of paper.
We approve.
We move to approve it.
To approve and authorize--
So if we're ready for a motion, I'm ready, we can get the show on the--
Can we, can we put a number on it before we--
9A, I think we did that already.
Can it be referred to as 9A, as read by Councilman Muscat?
It's listed on the agenda as 9A, it's just not stamped because we took it off the email, and it didn't go through the formal process of being assigned to the, that's the only reason.
But it will be.
We don't see it, we--
Gary, would the clerk have to sign that too, or no?
No, the clerk would not have to sign it, and I don't really think that there's--
They didn't ask for it, but I'm just trying to make sure.
I mean, if the, you know, I mean, the main reason that the clerk has been signing stuff is because his office is responsible for keeping the records. So I mean, if we sign off on it right now, and he keeps a copy, and that's his official record, then we should be perfectly fine.
Okay.
I mean, we can do that right after this meeting.
Great.
I, I would note that, you know, if you don't adopt this motion, we may be having to come back to you for--
Bite your tongue, bite your tongue.
That's fine.
Councilor.
Councilman Muscat?
Mr. Bazey, did you--
Yes. If, I mean, if we do have, obviously, we have to come back to sign this motion. Again, I'd like to see clarification and be specific, as we have a motion by whatever, blank, seconded by blank, to approve September 17. Okay, so we're going to do that today, but for the, for the motion, we need to be specific to authorize the mayor to close on the purchase of the golf course. And if there's any reference to anything on the lease, again, you know, we have to sign on it at this council, I don't know what was done in October by the previous council, but if we're signing something, I'd like to see something attached to this motion, so I'm not, I'm not going to put my signature on something that I haven't seen yet.
Councilor.
True. Councilman Muscat?
I, I think we clarified it, we're not going to do this motion, we're going to make a motion for the, for the--
The actual letter.
The, the actual letter to be signed by the mayor.
No, I'm talking about the, the, I think Mr. Miyaki mentioned that something coming back later. I just, I was clarifying to make sure that we don't have to go back and forth, that we have to just be specific on closing--
Because Miyaki would always come back to us and let us know that, that they need something from us.
I'll let you know if there's some additional thing. I guess what I would suggest in terms of the motion, other than the identification, is you could just make it the first two sentences of what I provided. Motion by blank, seconded by blank, to approve the September 17, 2018 clarification letter, which you could refer to as item 9A.
Well, no, item 9A, excuse me, is the letter that was read by Councilman Muscat.
Correct, that's what--
So this would have to take on a, okay.
Yeah.
So that's--
From Wayne County Principal Attorney, Tax and Real Estate Division, Harris Ahmad Esquire, addressed to Mayor Pletko, related to the liquor license associated with the purchase of the Warren Valley Golf Course. Mayor Pletko is authorized to execute this clarification letter, item 9A, on behalf of the city, and stop right there.
Yes.
All right? And that, if that's, if that's how you want the form of the motion, that'd be fine. As I stated--
Okay.
The other stuff, part of it's already included, namely, the purchase and the lease was already voted on, so--
Madam Chair?
Councilman Constan?
Yeah, and just, we're, if we pass this resolution, giving the mayor authority to sign, we're not signing anything.
Any other discussion?
Well, I'm ready to move forward.
Okay, well, we need support.
Support.
Support by Councilman Constan? Any discussion?
So we're doing all in favor to--
I just want to clarify what the, what the, was the motion basically as I read it?
Yes.
Or not?